Open session, public meetings are subject to being videotaped. Your image and voice may be recorded. Okay, let's start with appointments. We have an appointment to the Cable Access Committee of Maureen Johnson to fill a vacancy. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Home favor?
Aye.
We have a bill scheduled, selectmen expenses for $185.36, which is Mary's procurement training costs and postage.
Move to approve.
Second.
Home favor?
Aye.
And thank you for going to that.
My pleasure.
I think you need two on that.
You have two different pages.
Oh, all right, I signed the back one.
And you need two signatures, right?
It wouldn't hurt.
Procurement officer.
Yay.
Yeah, we didn't fill it out right.
We have a bill for festive events, which is Christmas time in Berlin Mailer, for $268.50. Do I hear a motion?
Approve.
Second.
Home favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're meeting Monday next week, right?
Yes.
We have a budget request for Veteran Services, which is an increase of $64.
Move to approve.
Second.
Home favor?
Aye. Yeah, I was stuck on the train this morning because the train was delayed. Somebody got hung up on the crossing in Lincoln, we're on. And I was figuring out the date wrong, because I'm going to go down to Connecticut on Tuesday next week, I was thinking, no, it's not Tuesday.
That's the Christmas party.
Oh, yeah.
In the lobby of construction.
Okay, we have a motor vehicle junk license, class III, for Berlin Auto Parts, with attached stipulations.
Adding the one that you suggested over the summer, that dust and debris be maintained. And I talked to the owner today, and he was agreeable.
Okay. Move to approve. And we confirm the fact that there have not been any really substantive issues.
Police chief confirms in writing, no problem.
Okay, move to approve.
Second.
Home favor?
Aye.
So, for tricor amusements, which is at Regal Cinemas, Solomon Pond, we have a public amusement license and a coin-operated amusement devices, 11 of them. Do I hear a motion?
Approve.
Second.
Home favor?
Aye.
We have the Berlin General Store, a common vicular license, and a Sunday frozen desserts, ice cream, soda water or fruit on the Lord's Day license.
Oops, sorry, I think I just attached that.
Okay.
That's all right, I'll get it together, just flip it over and then I'll...
Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Home favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, did the sale go through?
I haven't heard. This is for the new owner.
Okay.
So, I guess it'd be pending closing. This is this one.
Okay. Okay, we have, for Sylvia Wheeler of Wheeler's Garage, a second-hand motor vehicle, class I license.
Move to approve.
Second.
Home favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have for tilt at Solomon Pond Mall.
What is tilt?
The ground level of the Solomon Pond Mall.
Amusement stuff.
Oh, okay.
Oh, they still have that, huh?
We have a...
Quite a large number of...
Automatic amusement device, common vicular, and a public amusement license.
Approve.
Second.
Home favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, if we didn't give out Sunday ice cream licenses, would people be able to sell ice cream on Sunday?
Yes. I would like to get rid of that $5 annual fee that...
Now, why do you think they could?
Get rid of it?
No, why do you think they could sell ice cream?
Without a license.
Without a license.
A lot of towns have abandoned it. No one's come swinging out of... It's $5 that goes into the general fund for...
It's an enforcement. They have an enforcement issue then, you know?
Can we raise the cost to be more than $5?
Oh, man. We could start taxing Big Gulps.
We do.
We do.
We do.
I suppose.
We already taxed with a food tax. Okay. Did we hear... Well, we know the chief was busy today. Did he give you an updated one?
No, were you going to work with him on blending some language?
I did give him the stuff for that, so...
No, I've noted that, we'll put it next week.
Send him an email and ask him.
He may be here next week anyway.
Yeah.
Okay.
Ambulance billing write-off policy?
He was going to get June's review of that, and I have not heard. I have asked him writing for feedback, and I don't have it. Want to do that next week?
Yep, can't do it if we don't have the contract update for the ladder truck.
Did he answer or not, everybody?
I think he said that he'd been having a medical procedure, so...
No, no, I know that. No, that was a different issue, but I just didn't know if he answered other people, not the selectmen.
No.
All right, you want to hold on that?
Yep.
Yeah, and when I was... I can actually prepare the UCC form, but it occurred to me that if we are purchasing, quote-unquote, the sort of frame, engine, et cetera, that then we would hold title to that. And if we hold title to it, we don't have to worry about creditors of the second company seizing it. So, I need to figure out where title to that is in the interim. And if not, we will file a UCC one form. It's a one-page form.
All right, building inspector update, draft advertisement.
Surgery, yes, date not known yet.
Okay, well, why don't we hold on this? And is there any way for you to, or Dennis, to get on the thing and ask what people are paying building inspectors?
Yeah, there's a draft, there's a survey, MIA survey, or MMA survey website I can kind of...
Okay.
...prove.
So, Dennis, the treasurer, got a request from the school to change the way they do online deposits. I can quite understand it all. They want to adjust the recording of Berlin and Region online deposits to a semi-monthly entry. And so Dennis did not feel he wanted the funds...
Semi-monthly as opposed to what?
Weekly.
Oh.
And so Dennis wants them weekly. So then he asked me, is there a legal way to have some of our seniors, veterans, help them do Berlin work at the central office? I didn't...
What's the connection between those things?
Well, the central office is... The connection is, he said, I'm looking into ways to cut down on some of our administrative workload, as we're not getting more staff in the central office, and the workload is heavy, and I think there are some value-added activities.
Oh, okay.
So, he's requesting that they cut it down to semi-monthly. And Dennis said that he wanted it weekly, which is, I guess, what they're doing now.
Is this something that just came?
It came at 3 o'clock. Do you want to...
I don't think I was on that one.
So, the question of all this was, not weekly, it's not ours, is he wants to know if they could have senior work off. Now, I'm not sure that...
Who would manage it? The department head here usually manages and accounts for their time and signs off on a timesheet.
That would be the same thing over there.
Central office doing it?
Uh-huh, and they'd have to send the timesheet over.
And it's for Berlin Memorial, or...
It's for, it's from the central office for Berlin and Regional Online Deposits. Well, I do have to say that he hasn't requested it, the region hasn't requested it.
Well, that's my question. Who was requesting it?
This is Dennis.
Was it Dennis?
Dennis.
I wouldn't offer it, actually.
Well, I wouldn't have a problem offering it, but I don't know if...
Did he copy Rob Conroy on that?
No. Oh, no, that was just me.
And why does Dennis want to keep it weekly?
Some of our other departments do larger... I don't know. He says, I feel funds should be turned in or reported at least once a week. Some of our other departments do larger volume than the schools and are shorthanded issue, but manage to do their items daily or at least twice a week. Once a week is the least I would like to see.
So, this is direct deposit of...
Adjust the recording of Berlin and Region online deposits to a semi-monthly entry as there are...
Online deposits of what? Is this online deposits of employee pay? Is this online... What is it?
Well, I'll read you the whole thing. It doesn't... As there is a significant amount of extra work to recording and reviewing daily entries for online deposits, we are recording a single monthly deposit entry for Boylston for online deposits, and it's working for them. I tend to look at fund balances a couple times a month, and semi-monthly is what I'm proposing for Berlin and the region. I understand that the daily deposits provide some assistance with reconciliation. However, Cheryl mentioned that she prepares a quick summary of pending in-transit items to assist with end-of-month cash reconciliation.
So, this is receipts of the school?
I guess.
Not disbursements?
I don't know. You know what? Why don't we ask Dennis?
Yeah.
And before we... Ask him what it actually is.
That'd be good.
And whether the central office wants it?
Yeah, I mean, I think if before...
If they're not requesting it.
No.
Okay, just what it is.
They may not even want it.
First, what it is.
Yeah, first, we want to find out what it is.
Okay, yeah.
Because we clearly don't know.
Let's see, the assessor is asking if any of us want to attend a People GIS product demo at January 3rd Department Head Meeting.
What is People GIS?
Well, right now, we have GOTMS, and this is a product that would replace that.
Okay.
It's January 3rd, after the regular meeting, which starts at 10:00.
And in the very, in the back page, that last color page there, is different ways that different departments can have forms, so web-based forms to create databases and have the public input data directly in. So, like liquor license, or all the different license renewals, for example, could be fields that they populate, and it pops right into our...
Apparently GOTMS got sold to...
Acela.
Acela, and it's not...
The same.
The same.
Multiple people.
Okay, finalize the contract for the 1870 Town Hall.
She just wants to know, is anyone planning on going to the Department Head Meeting? I'm going to that.
No, maybe.
That night you meet.
I think it happened on my calendar, but...
And if... So, do you want me to post it? Probably not. It's just a demo. I don't think it matters much, but...
I was going to say, if it's just a demo...
She wants to make sure there's be bodies in the room versus if she's, you know, the day after the holiday like that.
So, that's the department.
So, was she going to propose to change the meeting?
I think she was going to do it after.
Oh.
After the meeting at 11:00, Chief Galvin is having training on everybody how to use the new copiers.
Oh, so this is what the department head meeting would be?
I think she thinks that will be the Department Head Meeting.
Well, I think that I'm...
How much she talked to Chief Zee about that, and how much time she thinks that would be of the Department Head Meeting?
Well, we still have time.
Okay.
Just put it back on next week, I guess.
Okay.
Okay, finalize the contract for 1870 Town Hall?
Mm-hmm.
That's you.
Yep, that's me. Okay.
Did Evy reach out to you today?
No.
Oh, she called.
And?
She had Tom with her, Tom Chalmers, liquidated damages insurance, the same things, the same points. She was just wondering where it was at. She had nothing to say other than, kind of, where's it at?
Okay, so, there was no new information or anything?
No, no substantive new... No.
Okay. I have to go through each of these, so bear with me.
I'll look through miscellaneous.
Okay, going through this. You were correct that the 5% was in 5.6...
Yeah, both of those clauses, okay.
And not 3.
Okay.
Yeah. And... Okay. And then the supplemental conditions are the ones that are attached to 201, correct?
Yeah, I just thought, cross-reference them, put them in the main body so that all the attachments are...
Yeah, no, 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 I just wanted to be sure that there wasn't a second set of supplemental that I hadn't seen.
No, that is correct.
Okay, all right, that's fine. Sorry, I was just going through the list, because I went through it on Saturday. The substantial completion date, there was a...
That's what I kind of thought she was asking about, like, did you set a substantial completion date? I said, Tom is working on that.
Well, I mean...
Tom Chalmers originally suggested the end of the year.
I think, let's put it there, and if the...
By mutual agreement, if need be, go on her.
Well, yeah, or if...
Or they can push back with the signing.
Or if they push back on signing, so...
Their initial will change. Keep that.
So, yes, so that's already...
Yep, yep. No, I didn't type it in.
Okay, so, okay.
That's a yes, that's a yes, that's a yes.
Yes to that. Yes to that.
Sign this.
I want to wrap this, because the chairperson of the board of select persons. Should I put Judy's name explicitly?
I wouldn't, because she's going off.
Just the board of select, it's on this.
Yeah.
Okay.
Board of Select, yeah.
Yep.
Okay?
Yep.
Yeah, you could put a reference at the bottom, you know, reference supplementary conditions to...
PNS experience.
Yeah, attached to a 102, okay?
Yeah.
Or 201, rather.
Right.
Yep.
And include the drawings, but you know what? No, that's part of the contract, which I think is already part of it, so no.
Mm-hmm.
Did you get that?
Yes, I wanted to talk to people about that. The liquidated damages clause here is a daily, you know, sort of agreed damage clause for delay in having the facility complete, okay? And, you know, I mean, typically, you see that sort of thing if, sort of, time and uses of the essence, you know?
School.
Yeah, if it was a school, or if you were, you know, redoing a highway garage, and you were renting, you know, a facility in the interim. In other words, where there's, you know, an identifiable...
Cost.
Yeah, financial cost. It didn't, it really doesn't appear to me here, though there is here, but that's what I wanted to talk to people about.
Well, the only cost is the events that they're not being able to have there.
Mm-hmm.
Be careful booking weddings until this is done.
Well, a lot of the stuff is getting pushed over to the gym at the church, like the exercise classes and everything. And the church has agreed or voted to change their fee schedule to match what the 1870 fee schedule was.
So, therefore, I mean, if, I don't know what we make out of there on some, you know, reasonable daily estimated basis, but you could put a figure like that in there if it's $100 a day, or...
You want me to text?
Other reason why Tom Chalmers suggested against it is if you try to penalize on liquidated damages, conversely, usually offer them a clause that says, but if you complete early, we'll reward you with money, which we don't necessarily have budgeted.
I don't agree with that.
That was his take, I'm not saying, just conveying it.
No, I don't agree that it needs to be a quid pro quo. Obviously, somebody can raise that.
I don't think we have any extra money.
I mean, I don't think it's a, I don't think it's a major issue, one way or the other, because I don't think, you know, a delay in the use of that, you know, is a really, you know, identifiable cost, you know, to the town. So, I don't mind not having it. But, you know, again, I want to talk to you guys about it, rather than just cross it off.
Well, what do they bring in a year? We did have a, we did have a... Did they submit a budget yet?
Well, even in miscellaneous correspondence, I believe, that there's updated, just year-to-date snapshots where they're at so far this year with people events, I think it's a people events one.
Has this been mentioned to Evy?
Well, she was on the phone, she said.
Tom Chalmers suggests, I mean, they reviewed it.
Right.
Tom Chalmers said, you know, he sort of recommended against it. Now I find out why, because he felt that would open the door toward them, you know, wanting a bonus, but, I mean, we can, you know, we can deal with that.
Do you want to call her?
No, I mean, I'll just, let me look at this, if I can find it. It's hard, so it's the one before.
No, I mean, I understand what's on the table here.
So, they had, in 2016, they made $14,000.
Okay.
Yes.
And in '20, 14, 15, they made $12,000.
Well, look at the year before, though.
13, the year before, they made 18. So, it looks like they bring in, so for the first, 1, 2, 3, 4 months of this year, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 months, they brought in $795, $665, $1,600, $885, and $1,500.
Okay. So, that comes out to less than $50 a day.
Snacks. Oh.
Some treats.
Whoa.
Oh, awesome. There you go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Enjoy them. We were in their purse, so we ate some of them. Oh, all right, thank you.
Have a good night.
Have a good night.
Were those ginger snaps?
Be careful going home, it's, I think it's starting to get icy.
Crispy.
Yeah.
Crispy ginger.
Yeah.
Ah.
So, anyway...
Yes.
At $14,000, it's $38.35...
A day.
A day, you know, I did it by $365. So, it's not much.
Right.
If you, I mean, if you put in $50 here, I think you'd, you know, cover the highest year, and it's not a huge amount of money.
No, so they shouldn't complain.
Right, now, let me say this, that... If you...
Can you hear me? I'm sorry.
Just get closer to the mic here.
Hold on, it's going down.
No, that's okay, we need a sound, we need a soundtrack for this, you know, it's kind of...
You're crunching numbers.
Yeah, we're crunching numbers, yeah. It's a good sound effect, that's...
I can't hear inside my head, sorry.
Okay. The other thing is that without a liquidated damages clause, if it is delayed, you can still make a claim.
Okay.
Okay? Liquidated damages is just...
A court claim? I mean, who do you...
Yeah, yeah, you could, yeah, I mean, obviously, first, you just make a contract claim saying you're being damaged by that. Liquidated damages is generally a way of, you know, establishing something ahead of time, before there's a controversy on the table. It's, they're supposed to be a reasonable estimate of the actual damages, and that's why it recites here it's not a penalty. So, but once you agree to liquidated damages, then you've, you know...
Given up your court part?
You've given up a claim, you know, making a claim based on actual damages in the future.
Well, it sounds like even if it went a year, the most it would cost us is $14,000.
$15,000, yeah.
And that, but on the other side, we wouldn't be paying for a building manager, we wouldn't be paying for the other expenses that are out there, so it would actually probably...
Be a wash.
Be a wash. So, I would say, then, don't put it in.
Okay, that's fine with me. As I say, it's not, if this were a facility that, you know...
If it was an elementary school, and we had to put the kids somewhere else, or if it was this building, and we had to put the police somewhere else, then...
Yep, exactly, that's when you really want to consider that. Okay, so, we'll, we'll take that out. Can I mark this?
Yep.
Okay.
I have it in Word, so I can delete it.
Okay, that's good. I think just a couple more points, sorry. Yeah, I think the contractor can fill out or supply...
He's on insurance, provide his insurance...
Yeah.
...coverage.
Yep.
You want me to consult with Maya or not?
Consult with Maya.
As to what the amounts in each category is sufficient, when the contractor gives?
Yeah, you might.
Okay.
Just get a reality check on it, okay? Frequently, what I've seen in these contracts is they will give you a statement of insurance, and then you attach that as an exhibit, and you say, as per exhibit, but they can also... You following me?
Yes.
Okay. So, all right, so that was that one.
And make reference to it in the main body, the 101 main body.
Well, no, this is the supplementary conditions.
Put it on the other side as a reference.
You've already referenced the supplementary conditions in the main body, and here...
Referenced it right in that chart.
You would say, if you, you take that approach, that they give you a certificate, a list of insurance, you're going to take these things out, and you're going to say, per contractor statement attached as exhibit, you know, B to these supplementary conditions, you would make?
Yes.
Okay, so that's that. Hang on, I'll go back to the, I think that was it, let me...
I think that was it.
That is it. Okay?
Yep.
So, we're going to email them to, for signature first, correct?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine.
If you want.
Yeah.
Yeah, because that way, maybe you'll get it back for Monday.
Yeah, okay, so...
Voila.
Voila, there you go.
Okay.
I have one last question.
This is my kids. I don't know, you know what? Uh-oh, maybe that's their prom date.
No, maybe.
Oh, no, oh, I know who that is.
Okay.
Better not be a problem.
I thought, she's nicked, she's nicked this folder since I did.
I did.